Decent weather, October 24th, seven o'clock on the nose. If I could have everyone stand for a flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for Christians, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Philman, if you could call it over.
Sure. Mr. Rappich? He's absent.
Mr. Rosetti?
Here, finally.
Mr. Neal?
Here.
Brad?
Present.
Right.
Here.
And myself, present.
It's genuinely awkward not having anybody on the screen.
Yeah.
The Bears game.
Good. This is my first meeting in two years without anyone.
Thanks to Mr. Rosetti. I will entertain a motion to table approval of minutes for October 12th.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
We'll call Mr. Philman.
He said. Who made the motion?
Mr. Brad.
Hi.
Neil?
Yes.
Brad, do you need to vote?
No.
Mr. Brad?
Aye.
Can I go on this or do it for the staff?
You can vote on it since we're table.
Aye.
For my.
For my.
It's almost an insult.
For my.
Just very quick. I will call the public hearing open regarding a petition for rezoning of the property at 19 North 479 U.S. Highway 20 submitted by ECR acquisitions. Mr. Ray, do we have anyone signed up to speak at this public hearing?
Just the petitioner himself, Mr. Mike Zola. I just wanted to look for the record first that this was posted appropriately in the Daily Herald as well as on the property and letters were also sent to the neighboring property owners as required by the Jordan State Statute. And Mr. Zola is here tonight to present the petition.
Here we go again.
Mr.?
Much smaller than this. We are the contract purchasers of about seven and a half acres there. It's lot six in the Arrowhead Business Center. It's kind of the, really the last lot that hasn't been spoken for, even though there's a couple of small lots still available in the park. And we took this on to take a look at what we can do there. And so we met with staff here several weeks ago and have looked at the market at several different opportunities. So after talking with them, we made the decision again, as we've done several times, rezoning from OM to M2 largely to accommodate our trucking logistics people and then just be able to move forward, you know, from there. So again, seven and a half acres, this, this happens to have been a hack sale. And so somebody picked this up and we found out about that, my partner found out about it, and we were able to get that under control. Three concepts that we brought to you today to look at vary. One is, and it's a need that we've seen out there because of all the truck stops, one is strictly a parking area that would be fully paved, fully fenced, gated, you know. We see a lot of semis and a lot of these companies have these semis parking on off-ramps, on-ramps everywhere. And so it's just one option to see what would happen to do that. It's very, it's a very irregularly shaped parcel, so it, it works well. You can see, you know, the number of trucks and we've got a cement company obviously next door, so that's one option. The second option is really one we've been pursuing. We built two buildings here already, the BEK Transport and the Freight Union. That's the other one. That's the second concept that would be an office warehouse, maintenance bays, four, six bays with, with parking, again, just like those other two facilities. So it's almost a mirror of that. And then the third option would have been more of a traditional warehouse with parking. But again, because of the irregular shape, we do, we lose a lot of land in that concept. And honestly, we haven't seen much. Brian's been leading, here who's with me, has been leading a bit of a marketing effort and we haven't seen a lot in that arena, I think largely because of, of what we have configured. But we've seen some decent activity on the logistics office warehouse and we've seen some activity on the parking idea. So that gives us a wider range of things that could be done, but still falls under that zoning category and everything else we would do would be just like we've done Couple of things, I'm thinking about it, I was concerned if people knew where it was, a lot environmental because of the gas stations and the leaks that have occurred over the years, that all came back clean. Everything's no further remediation, everything's clean as a whistle. So that was a concern going in. And then the rest of that, all of our due diligence, our soil borings and topography, that's all come back relatively okay. There's some issues, but there's issues everywhere, you know, on dirt like this. The biggest challenge here is nobody's cut grass or trees or bushes out there forever. And so there's going to be a large brush hogging effort that would have to go on out there once a building is, is designed. Timing on this is basically, you know, we're in our due diligence and when you get, with approval from you guys, we'll be back to the village board here in kind of mid-November and largely because we're, we're the first group, we're the guinea pig that got stuck in the middle of this cane new page soil and water conservation report that now has to be done on any rezoning. This is an established lot, it's been here, but because of the change, I think in 2020, we are the first group here that got subjects, so we had to fill out another full application, submit everything there, they're working on it, and that report's due here by the 11th and we would hit, I think, the 17th board, which works out for us fine, you have no timing issues there. I'm open to any questions. This is again pretty straightforward on what we've been attempting to do in a lot of different places.
Mr. Ray, does staff have any opportunity to take a look at this, obviously this petition? Is there a recommendation that staff has about the rezoning of this property?
So some considerations the staff looks at is what's around the property right now, would the potentially uses intensify at all with the type of rezoning? It's already in an industrial district, it's just in a more restricted district right now. The idea being that it's kind of a buffer between commercial and heavier industrial. That said, what's next door is a concrete plant, which is just about as industrial as you can get. And then on the other side of this slide, it's currently just vacant land, which is planned or, or at least thought that that will go industrial someday as well. The property owner on that side, one of them has reached out for annexation soon, this year, potentially next year, and they're planning on asking for industrial zoning as well, so this would be right in that neighborhood. As far as the uses go, again, the, all, all three of the uses that Mr. Zola presented wouldn't be permitted in the M2 zoning district, so you don't have to approve, you wouldn't be approving a specific use tonight, you would just be opening up the opportunity for, for him to find a, a user to suit one of those. But in general, yes, I would say that staff has no, has no concerns or objections to rezoning.
Is there even any option as far as widths of lanes and, you know, right in, right out kind of scenarios for entrance on Dietrich?
No, actually, there's not. And largely, we, we even saw a plan that somebody put together where they had a hotel, a storage facility and an industrial building, like one in each wing. The thing that, that people don't realize is from Dietrich to Arrowhead, there's about a 20-foot drop. So we started 580 here and we're down at 560 down at Arrow. Now that is good for us in May because that's the way the stormwater flows, but, but trying to do much up on Dietrich, and it's pretty narrow. So for us, given what we're doing, we, we would just, that'll be a green space, you know, and there won't be any access on to Dietrich for us at all. It'll come off of. And, and to go down Josh a little bit, we also, in the plan, there's a large cul-de-sac there. And this, and I repped this park when Keith Holden and Jared Shinkey owned it, and they just did that big old cul-de-sac because they owned all the dirt and they had the Arrowhead gas station and this was their leftover lot. It's way too big and it eats up way too much land. So what you're seeing in this plan, we asked our architect, we can't remove it for right now, even though by approval from when they got the next, when, when the land next door comes in, that goes away and the road gets extended. We just cut it down. We made sure fire trucks, semis can still turn around because we don't want anybody deadheading, especially the truckers, deadheading, not being able to turn around. But we can dramatically reduce it and just make it more of a standard cul-de-sac and then ultimately get rid of it if we see anything going the other way. Now, we all might not be here by then, but, but for the design, at least we keep intact what the village has had and keep that safe, but reclaim some of that land so that we can, we don't do much up there, you see, but we, we do get into parking and again, we might have stormwater that flows down that way and try to keep that a little more green until a point in time where we can eliminate. I thought about going to the guys next door or a guy across the street, but that's going to be way too much brain damage. And, and as long as we can hit the numbers that we need, our parking counts or building, and I think we have, that we went this route to just get it shrunk down more into a reasonable size. So this happened to us at Hampshire Woods too, by the way, same thing, big old cul-de-sac out there that was just put in temporarily, which we're now just getting to to make permanent.
Thank you. Anyone else sign up to speak?
Yes, sir.
And I will officially call the public hearing closed regarding this petition for rezoning of the property at 19 North 479 U.S. Highway 20. And I will move on to entertaining a motion to recommend a approval of this petition for rezoning of the property at 19 North 479 U.S. Highway 20 as submitted by ECR acquisitions. And further, commission side deliberation comes.
I think we should be, for you guys.
I'll second.
Mr. Philman?
Mr. Rosetti?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
So. Thank you, sir.
Okay. We'll see you again.
Yep. Again, ask, draw up one of your wonderful telegrams, Mr. Ray. A little background on the next agenda.
Absolutely. Before the commission next is, concept plan of subdivision from Crown Community Development regarding the remainder of Prairie Ridge subdivision generally north of Kelly Road. Crown's here tonight, we have Chris Nass, looks like he's going to speak first. Crown came to the village board last week and did kind of a courtesy presentation to them just to get a feel of what kind of questions they should be addressing in this concept plan before they made an official submittal. They are here tonight for you for the first step in the subdivision process. They will again go back to the village board to, to present again with your comments accompanying that presentation. And then they will go forward assumably with their engineering and new development agreement or amendments, preliminary plat, and that will all come several months later, probably in the spring. So then they will come back again before Planning and zoning commission for a public hearing, again, the village board for, for their entitlements. So Chris, go ahead and take it away.
Thank you, Josh. Good evening, gentlemen. Yeah, so before you is the revised and updated concept plan for the mountains of Prairie Ridge. So that would be everything north of Kelly Road. Nothing complicated for everything south as that's mostly spoken for being built out. We, we're excited to bring this plan to you for a number of reasons. Well, first of all, you all know, we've, we've been a part of this community, I think we were just trying to tabulate, I think, for 17 years. And the reason why we're excited to share this with you tonight is it, this plan really is a dramatic improvement to the community. But the goal of this plan was to introduce a, a greater variety of housing, which we didn't have in the previous version. That was one goal. Second goal was to improve the west side of Harmony Road. I'll call it the neighborhood's sort of F, H, N, or I and G. If you were to compare that to the previous plan, it's dramatically improved in terms of the, the streetscape and curvature of the roads, et cetera. And Rich will speak to that briefly here in a moment. But with this plan, we, like I said, we, we also relocated the school site, which used to be in what's currently neighborhood E and now is to the east of Harmony, where you see future school site. I would introduce Rich Olson, he's the, he's the magic and the designer behind the plan. He is with the principal with Gary Weber and Associates, and he's going to kind of walk you through the, sort of the creative vision for the.
Sure. Thanks, Chris. Good, my name is Rich Olson, I'm with Gary Weber Associates, we're landscape architects and land planners out of Wheaton, Illinois. We indeed prepared this revised concept plan for your consideration tonight. First of all, just thanks for the opportunity to come for you and talk. I was part of the Oakstead developments and I was on that screen talking to folks. And this is just, it's, this is a lot easier and a lot nicer and it's just good to be able to come here and talk to people and stuff. So I, what I thought I would do is just very briefly talk about some of the planning factors and existing conditions that we use to help prepare the plan, which is up on the screen currently. And then just walk you through the plan and some of the things that we have going and then just answering questions you may have. Super large plan, there's a lot going on. I'm going to try and get through it fairly quickly and then if you hear something that you want to hear more about, I, I can talk about this all day long. And the plan really sells itself. So as you're aware, the, the majority, it's 958 acres and it's generally south of, south and west of Big Timber Road. You have Melms Road, which is, runs right along the northern boundary, and you've got Kelly Road that's along the southern border. And Harmony Road, which is just directly right down, it's pretty much down the center of the site, sort of cuts it in, in two halves. You've got east of, of Harmony and west of Harmony. And then when you look at on the west of Harmony, you really almost have two separate parcels as well, a north and a south. So I'll kind of be referring to those three quadrants and I'll walk you through each of those quadrants really quickly and, and look at that. But some of the things that we look at from, we're always looking at a site, and that's why I bring these to, with me all the time, is we always look at existing and surrounding conditions on a site. And this site is no different. It's, it's, you know, there's farming all around it currently, from, to the west, to the north and to the east. The trend of development, as you know, is coming up from the south. We've got existing development going on, which is good. We also look at access, vehicular access, pedestrian access. We have great access. We have multiple points on multiple large roads, so this site is ideal for that. We also look at the site itself and what's on the site from an environmental standpoint, from what's currently being done on the sites. It's currently mostly farmed, as you know. We look at the topography, it's not a really large, it's not, there's not a lot of topography, it's so gently rolling in some areas. There are some floodplain, you'll see, I've noted in the blue up there, and the green that you see up there is forested areas or some existing trees. And we look to preserve those types of areas on, on our site. And hopefully you'll see that once I flip to the next, the next slide. The, the yellow X is just for perspective are low points and the red are the high points of the site. Site generally drains from east to west. There are a couple of annoying utilizations that are through the site. I'll just point them out right down here and here, but we've, we've, we've planned around them carefully and utilize them as actually open space areas, which you'll see in a minute how, how we, how we worked around that. And we've got a few little sites that are kind of, you know, hold, donut holes, but that's just how, that's how it works with this site. Those sites will be developed in the future. So let's, let's take, let's flip the page to the actual plan itself. A lot going on here, so I'm going to just kind of talk generally about the entire site and then I'm just going to zoom into the different parcels. But just generally speaking, we're, we're proposing 1,978 units over 958 acres. That equates to a little bit of a 2.06 million units per acre from a density standpoint, which is really low. This site has almost 50% open space and the really nice thing about how the open space works on this site is that there's a lot of it and it's spread out and we're able to utilize it for our recreational facilities. We also have a, as Chris mentioned, we have a future school site, which is right off of Harmony Road, just to the south section as you come in Harmony. We did move that from a more northern portion to a more southern section, so it can be really in that first phase of development. And, and we have 456 acres of open space, which is like 40, almost 48% of the site. And in that, sort of that breakdown of the different product types, in which I think is really exciting about this plan and makes it more modern, I like to say it's more modern because it really is designed for what the people are wanting nowadays. And it, it has three different single-family homes sizes to it. We also have an active adult, single-family home, which is a, a single-family home that's geared toward a first needs 55 and older. We also have two different townhome types on it, so we have a front-loaded townhome where the garage is on the front of, of the, of the unit. We also have a more urban-style rear-loaded product, which is so that you can drive in the back and the front of the, of the building doesn't have a garage. It's like a three-story type block situation. So that really gives us the ability to open up in the industry like multiple storefronts is what they call it. So instead of having just your, generally one product, which you have to burn through, you have multiple products. And that, what that does is that helps them to sell to different prospective builders that want to build different things. And it also helps them to, you know, start to make a successful project quicker. And ultimately, obviously, it helps the, the community as a whole get through things and be more positive, you know, so you don't have to wait as long. Because the quicker you can get people, obviously, the quicker we can get commercial. Quicker we can have commercial, then there's more, more textile. So just to dive in a little bit about the overall concept, which is really cool, we have major entrances off of the major roads. So for example, we have Harmony, which is in North-South Road, and we have Big Timber, and we have major entry points. And at those entry points, that road that you see is a spine road that travels and winds through the site. And that spine road is there for the vehicular movements through. So on either side of the spine road, you have neighborhoods, we call them neighborhoods. And those neighborhoods are smaller neighborhoods that then have a specific product type within those neighborhoods. So the, the concept is that you have the neighborhoods that filter out to the spine road and then spine road then distributes the traffic out to the major roads from there. And the other thing that it does is it also gets a point where the people can then gravitate towards, because we're going to put a, or we're proposing to put a, a pathway system on one side of the road so that people can come out and for example, along the spine road on the east side, all those people can go up to the, the pathway and then go right down to the school site fairly safely because that, that road only has so many curb cuts on it versus multiple, multiple driveways that only have so many curb cuts. And then furthermore, each of those pods generally has open space around it, so there, it's, it's a bit of a cluster plan, open space cluster plans, we call it. And then within each of the pods, we also integrate little open space opportunities that are geared for those individual neighborhoods. And that's really important because if you're dealing with active adult community, they want specific things. And if you're dealing with a townhome community, then they want specific amenities and so we can gear it towards that as well. And on top of it, another layer is we've got large community parks, one on the east side of Harmony and one on the west side of Harmony. If you look at the, of, of the overall plan here, you've got a 29-acre park on the, on the east side of Harmony and then up at the northwest, you've got a 30-acre park, dedicated park up in that area. So the community at large is going to have these larger parks, really large parks, and then individually there's parks and there's trails that connect all those. So I think that's the, the overall, let's, let's take a look individual at each neighborhood.
You start first?
Uh, whatever the next one is, I'll see what happens, yeah. Okay, so this is the northwest area and this is where we can start to see some of the concepts that I talked about. Again, you have a main entrance off of Harmony and one off of Melms. If we just look at the one off of Melms Road, that's an active adult pod. And so the active adult buyer wants to feel like they have a dedicated area separated from the rest. And that's what this pod is perfect at. You've, you've got an open space drainage area that, that separates the active adult with the single-family area. In that drainage area, we'll also have a pathway system that connects the active adult all the way through to Harmony as well as a pathway system that comes down through neighborhood and neighborhood B and then eventually straight down south. All that green space that you see on the western area is currently being farmed and we're going to convert that to prairie. So it's, it's going to, it's going to take essentially a situation that's eroded condition certain time for the year and it's going to bring it, and it's sort of wet anyway, and we're going to bring it back to a, a native state and we're going to have a trap, a pathway, so it's going to be an active, you know, situation that, that gives you the ability to have recreational all, all times of the year. So we're excited about that as well. And then you'll be able to obviously also access the future community park up in the northwest section of the site. Let's move on. So this is south of that. So if you follow the green space on the west side, you'll be able to connect a trail system that comes down from the neighborhood to the north through and then, and gets you into this section to, to the south. And there again, you've got the, the collector road or the spine road and neighborhoods on each side of the spine road. This one has that, that utility easement that runs through and what we've done with that is we created yet another linear green space that helps those folks up in neighborhood F and H have a large open space pathway system right in their own community, as well as we're thinking about looking at doing a dog park. There's some townhomes and there's areas that, that they're, they're going to really benefit from, from a dog park in that particular spot. And of course, everything leads out to the spine road, which will have a pathway along the south side. We also have a pathway between neighborhood I and G that connects to the south to the existing pathway that is out there now. So everybody coming up from the south can actually, this is a current path that's out there right now. And we also, in neighborhood I, what we've been able to do, there's an existing really nice wooded area right there. You can kind of see it on this concept plan. But if you look, if you're, if you looked at the area, see there's an existing, there's a bunch of oak out there and we thought that that would be just a really nice spot for a, sort of a wooded park area where we're going to clean up the area underneath it, probably try and get a little pathway through there and maybe tuck out a small play area in there if it, if it makes sense. So we're excited about that as too. And then I guess we can flip to the other side of Harmony. The other side of Harmony, here again, you can see the same concept as you come from the west to the east, you got the future school site, this is on the south, and then you've got a pod that's Pod J and Pod Z on either side of that. And then you'll notice again, pretty much everywhere you look, you'll see one of these open spaces that we've designed, so as you come off of an entry point, you, you terminate right into that open space area. And that's where, when we come back on, on a preliminary basis or, and finally, you'll see a lot more detail. Right now I've got some colorful scribbles up there now, I'm not really sure what we're doing. But, but the idea is those would be specific to those specific pods and, and we'll develop those. You got the future school site, this is on the south, and then you've got a pod that's Pod J and Pod Z on either side of that. And then you'll notice again, pretty much everywhere you look, you'll see one of these open spaces that we've designed. So as you come off of an entry point, you terminate right into that open space area. And that's where, when we come back on a preliminary basis, or and finally, you'll see a lot more detail. Right now, I got some colorful scribbles up there now, not really sure what we're doing. But the idea is those would be specific to those specific pods and, and we'll develop those as necessary. For example, if it's an active adult, you're gonna probably put something that's gonna be more geared toward those folks, whether it's a seating area or maybe a pickleball court, something along those lines. And if it's a, if it's a, if it's a single-family area, you're probably gonna put a little top line area. Yeah, so that, that winds its way all the way up to Big Timber Road, which is super important because that gets everybody up to a major road that gets you closer to ninety and kind of fills out this site quite nicely. So that kind of gives you, actually, I got one more slide. So one of the things that is, because of the site is so large, I couldn't, I talked a little bit about the pathway system. So the red is our pathway system that leads through the site. Now, just share some kind of fun facts. We're suggesting that we're looking, that represents almost eight miles of dedicated pathway through the site. So if you run a marathon, you could almost do that three times, get all in the same community and get your workout in. And the nice thing is, is that because we have these spine roads, you're not interacting with the cars as much. And you've got the ability to have those, and then we, of course, connect from the north to south. It's also worth noting that we are gonna continue it down Harmony. There's a gap in the property, but once that parcel comes in, then you can connect it. So people, the children that are coming down from the north would then obviously be able to take that bike route down to Harmony and cross over to the school site. So we're, we're super excited, we, this, we love the plan. It's definitely an improvement on multiple, multiple levels from, from the last plan. And we certainly would love to hear your comments and hopefully like where we're going.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to recommend approval of the content plan of subdivision for redesign planned residential development for a portion of Prairie Ridge and Kelly Rhodes. And we are motioning to step in and voting. This is my question, comments? You had mentioned, I do have one item, you had mentioned that, you know, some of the active adult communities, you know, they prefer the...
Isolated?
Yeah.
It's, it's really kind of a sense of like, like they're in a private area.
Yeah, peace and quiet. Peace and quiet, especially as I get older, I find more benefit to. So out of curiosity, you know, there's two active adult communities in very close proximity to the school site. We know that's gonna be slated to be a grade school, middle school.
Based on our discussions with the school district, it's currently projected to be a grade school, elementary school. One of the reasons we also integrate active adult pods into the neighborhood is because they also like to be near grandchildren. A lot of the reasons that these folks move out to this area because the primary motivator is to be closer to family. So, you know, it becomes an extended caregiving situation and it's kind of very conducive to that.
And this, this, these are potted alsea greens being surrounded or some sort of buffer between isolating them. So it's, it's, and it also works because that area right there, if you look at that east of Harmony, that's really where we have currently built, there's built detention ponds, there's, you know, you can start building out there quicker. And so that gives us the ability to start offering that product upfront.
As far as that spine road, what kind of traffic calming implementations might be slated to exist? There are stop signs or, you know, even light speed bumps or?
Yeah, typically, you wouldn't have any along there unless you deem it necessary. You're gonna have, you're gonna have the stop sign at the, at the Big Timber, you know, the stop sign at Harmony. And you might have an intermittent one, but it would be whatever you guys decide, but typically they're...
One nice thing is the curvature of the road, you know, it's not a straightaway, so that, that does help to, you know, sort of temper thing, but yeah.
Well, I've always been a fan of Crown developments. And, you know, the offerings that you guys provide, I'm looking forward to, this is another very atypical Crown development. And I've seen successes with, you know, the way that these are designed and, you know, with the spine roads and the subdivided neighborhoods. You know, you guys do a really good job at building out these neighborhoods and then offering up the sites to builders to come in and build in. And they are, you know, the diversity of housing that comes in with developments like this, it's not a single builder. It's, you know, it could be multiple builders coming in, kind of building in line with what the overall view of the property is. I have always been a fan of, of the product that Crown, Crown brings. I'm looking forward to, I'm looking forward to this one in Hampshire. This will do us very well for our community, so.
Thank you.
Assuming, of course, all, all the approvals go through, which I'm sure we will, because we love you, just like Eric does. Will you be building the eastern Harmony section first?
Yes. Yeah, I'll preference, like I would say that the thing, which we're, we're so pleased to be able to work with, with y'all, the vision you have, so appreciate that. To answer your question, yes, we'll be moving east side of Harmony from the southwest corner to the northeast corner. To start. So I, just in the short term, we would envision, these are projections, always market fair, been hard to, you know, get out your crystal ball, right? But, you know, we, we can see a scenario where we could even begin development in like neighborhoods J and Z next year. And possibly Y next year as well, because that's introducing something unique. So that, that would be pretty exciting if we can, we got, we're ahead of us to get that done, but that's, that's the goal right now.
What do you foresee the cost of homes will be?
Yeah, that's a great question. So recently, the, the prices just in the neighborhoods just south of this were starting to average into four hundred. And some of them were reaching five hundred thousand, like the Silverthorne neighborhood, et cetera. That's a wonderful thing, obviously, we're seeing some moderation in the market right now. But, you know, nationally, appreciation in the last two years has been anywhere in like in the thirty to forty percent range. Chicago appreciation has only been about twelve percent. So that's actually a good thing, because hopefully that'll keep things a little bit more stable. Again, don't have our crystal ball, but, you know, tends to be the belief. So I would, as costs go up, et cetera, you know, I would have, as we progress, you know, I've, I've been in this business a long time. I, it's, I can only think of one time where you had, you know, significant price adjustments and, but over, over the big picture, things tend to go up.
Will one pod be at a certain price level and another pod be at a higher price level?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
With the exception it might be, so in the active adult sections that are, you know, age-targeted, that's a much higher price per square foot. So if somebody wants to buy a home that's single-level living, they pay a premium for that, so those will always be a much higher price per square foot.
There won't be many homes on slabs, will there?
That's not the market, although I will say active adults oftentimes don't want a basement, so that might be an exception. They're just usually done with the storage at that point in their life and, you know, but yeah.
The stat was true, is that it, that it come up at the board meeting, the fact that there's issues up in Lincoln subdivision because there are built-on slabs up there and there's small garages. But, so that will be something that the staff in the village board takes under serious consideration when developing the development agreement or amendment to the current agreement.
What I'm thinking about is I'm kind of regreled with Carol on section in the, the other, the Cambridge Lake section, they're all on slabs. I personally think that's terrible.
Yeah. I've been with Crown for three years, and I actually worked for D.R. Horton before Crown, so they're not all on slabs. Actually, some are, some aren't, it varies by neighborhood. But the, the, earlier in the, in that community, some of the active adult homes had a choice of basement or slab. And then the last like five or six years, it moved to all slab because that's just what the market wanted. This is an interesting weird fact. It, it's sort of, you don't even realize this, but, so the person that buys that home, they want a two thousand square foot ranch, they're thrilled to just sort of, you know, simplify their life, right? And even if they had an inclination, they want a, want a basement, they would walk into the sales center and say, well, just out of curiosity, how much is the basement? Salesperson would say fifty thousand dollars, and they're on a budget, and they're not gonna spend fifty thousand dollars for a space that they're just gonna really not do a lot with. So for that reason, that buyer just, they didn't value that. But traditional buyers, two-story homes, they tend to have, if it's a family, that, you know, you got, if stuff. And it somehow kind of multiplies.
Same thing, basically, sometimes.
Yeah, 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 yeah. And then when they're teenagers, you want the finished basement because you wanna, you want them to bring their friends to your house so you know where they're at.
I think it was mentioned at the board meeting that currently, none of the builders you work with have any one-car garage.
Yeah, that's important.
So that's not a factor.
And we would be happy to, you know, state that our homeowner associations would have to require that everything be a two-car garage, we would be fine with that. Because I do know and I can appreciate that perspective on that, like, community, and a lot of that is driven by the one-car garage and no basement.
So even your smallest lots will likely not have two car garages?
Absolutely, yes.
Including the new development by us, the townhomes just want to be all off of Tuscan, all of those are outside, you know, one-car garages and slabs and stuff.
Yeah, the townhomes, yeah. Yeah. But no single family. You know, we, yeah, yeah, I mean, people today, you just, you need a two-car garage.
I have a Ford, so I'm a...
I can see this.
Trees, I see you've got trees penciled in here all, all the way around the pathway, I'm sorry, I mean, all the way around the pathway. Will you, in effect, be planting a lot of trees, I hope?
Yeah, so actually, that's, I didn't even mention the landscape, you didn't even go through the landscape, and that, that spine road, to answer your question, it's, yeah. I'll answer your question, then I'll add to it, you know, the spine road will be well landscaped on either side. So there's gonna be a buffer area on that, on that area where there's gonna be landscaping. So you won't see in the, well, you'll see through at the start, but it'll, over time, it'll start to grow in and you'll have less, less visibility to the homes kind of thing. You can kind of see that, if you ever go up to Huntley, Talmar is an example, they've got a spine road where they've got buffers on either side. They kind of show you what happens twenty years later to a spine road. Sometimes you, you know, you can overplant this as balance, but on the pathways, we do scatter along those pathways, just almost every so often, a few trees to help mark that as you're going down the path. For sure. Not, not a lot, because it's mostly prairie, you know, you're going through prairie, you don't want a lot of...
Somebody mentioned earlier, and I'll just, if I may, just sort of touch on it. Be quite frank, one of the reasons I really enjoy being with Crown is we do things differently. I did work for builders for like twenty-five years before Crown and loved it, and all tremendous respect for my builder career. But Crown just takes great pride in doing things like all these ribbons of open space. I mean, you know, here, like, you just, you don't see, like, let's put some green space in between these lots here. Like, you just don't see that, right? It's everywhere throughout, and that's why when you look at it, like, the green pops out of you because it's well-balanced. Now, on the spine roads and the range where the landscaping is gonna be near, is that going to be something where they're set far enough that when they mature, it's not going to be something, because I know like in town a lot, we have a lot of big trees that are out there. And for fire apparatus and bigger vehicles that are going down, there's a lot of scraping that goes on that. Is that, is that something that's kind of been taken into consideration too?
Yep, short answer, yes. Over time, trees do grow up and have a certain width to them, and yeah, we'll definitely take that into account.
Notice too, like, we got the nice, because this is like a...
Well, one of the things that we don't have to worry about, we don't have a boulevard down the spine road. Sometimes, like, if you ever do go up some community that have a boulevard, they can put too many trees in the center boulevard. We don't have that here, so you're gonna be offset, so you're gonna have a sidewalk or a trail, and then you'll have, and then you'll have the sort of the buffer area that'll be planted. It's been very nice.
Between Pod D and Pod F, the rectangular grayish area, what is that going to be? Between D...
Oh, that's the existing private property.
Oh, that's, that's your own there?
Oh, yeah, that's the, that's the, that separates the south section to the north section. This area right here is, is a, they'll, it's a land that's not, it's currently being farmed and something else on there. And we do, we, we stub into it, so there's a stub for future development, and then they got access off of Harmony. I'm sure somebody will probably develop that for houses someday or come in for you guys.
I love it.
Or dirt bike park.
The, you mentioned the prairie, prairie section? Does that include like a pollinator garden or something?
So prairie, once it, again, short answer, yes. The prairie actually has it all built in because you've got plants that are pollinators for bees. That's the great thing about prairie, you've got the perennials that are, that are coming up every year and service the different pollinators on.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments from anyone?
Sure.
I'm good.
I will entertain a motion to recommend approval of the content plan of subdivision for redesign planned residential development for the Prairie Ridge and Kelly Rhodes committed by Crown.
Amazing. I didn't even hear you talking.
No, you didn't.
I didn't hear you. That's all right. We sent it right at the exact same time, about forty years ago.
We've got a two-second delay, though, so like...
Right?
Mr. Rosetti?
Hi.
Mr. Neil?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Bill, all right. I will now entertain a motion to authorize this here to report the actions of the commission's business this evening. I'll second. Rosetti?
Hi.
Neil?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
And so, Brian? Just give me a moment, Brian.
I don't know. Can't vote nay, so I'm not gonna vote aye.
Any public comments signed up this evening?
No other questions.
Thank you, sir. I myself do not have any announcements, not aware yet of any of our next meetings, definitively speaking.
Not definitive, I do believe we are planned at least to have business for you at your next regularly scheduled meeting on November eleventh, fourteenth? November fourteenth. Of course, at least a week ahead of time, we'll, we'll confirm that, and the packet will go out several days in advance if there is business. But it all kind of hinges on some engineering reviews that need to come back, so could be then or could be the meeting after.
Well, technically, officially speaking, we are looking for a new, or additional, or seventh member, Mr. Hoffman's resignation certificate. If you know anyone who would be interested, please let me know. We do post it on the website, I think we are gonna be posting on Facebook, so I think it's very interesting to try to read you about that. We did entertain a possible candidate who might be declining, scheduled for already full. In case you know anyone who lives in Hampshire will deal with us. I will entertain a motion to...
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. A second? Do you want, do you need to roll them? Yes, please. Yes, please. Bill?
All right.
Mr. Neil?
Yes.
Brian?
Hi.